Okay, awesome. We are continuing on in our study of the Book of James, and we're not quite done with chapter two at this point. And it's fun, we're in both Tuesday nights and Sunday nights, we're getting into very uncomfortable topics for people, just because that's we're reading the Word of God and letting the Word of God speak for what it has to say. Sorry. And on that note, we finished or we started into this very difficult for many people to understand section of the Book of James, and that is chapter two, where so many, on a first glance, think that James and Paul may not have the same theology, or may not have the same understanding of what it means to be saved. And if we were to take the Book of James out of the Bible, it would be easy for some people to make this claim, that it's, you know, that what Paul says, and Ephesians too, "For by faith you have been saved, through grace, and that not of yourselves; it's a gift of God, and, you know, not of works, lest any man should boast." But again, we have this understanding that Paul does not in any way shape, matter, or form say, "All I'm here to do is teach you how to get started on your journey, and I will have nothing else to say about the rest of your walk, the rest of your life." He says a multitude of things. He has many encouragements, many exhortations about how to live the life of faith that we have been called to. There's many places, Galatians 5, it talks about the fruits of the Spirit. In practically all of Paul's books, he starts off, well, he starts off with an introduction, and then he gets into knee-deep into theology. And then he usually concludes with practical application of how to live our life in service and submission to the Lord. We could look at Romans 12, look at Romans 14, and really, all of the back half of the Book of Romans is about practical instructions for a believer to activate our faith and our walk and our service to God. Ephesians, a six-chapter book. The first three chapters are entirely theological, and the last three chapters are entirely practical about how to live our life, whether it's in marriage, or in parenting, or in spiritual warfare. He calls us and tells us, "Here's how to live out your faith." It's never passive, it's never dormant, it's always actively serving, always actively working, it's always putting others above ourselves, actively putting on the whole armor of God, actively doing what God has called us to do. And so taking James, as we kind of maybe concluded with last week, out of Scripture doesn't fix any problems for people. James is just a little more blunt and a little more direct on the specific topic of faith without works is dead. Paul does not want a believer to have a dead faith. Paul does not want believers to think, "Well, I got my get-out-of-jail-or-get-out-of-hell free card, and I'm all set with that. I don't have to think about God, I don't have to serve God, I don't have to do anything for God for the rest of my days. I just know," you know, and there's this perception, "Well, you know, I mean, I don't mind sitting all the way in the back corner of heaven. As long as I'm in heaven, I'm okay. I don't need the rewards, I don't need, you know, I just, as long as I'm in the back corner, still able to kind of see God from a great far distance. I don't mind if I'm the worst of the worst. As long as I get to heaven, I'm okay." That's not Paul's encouragement for us. That's certainly not James' encouragement for us, and therefore, I don't believe it's the Holy Spirit's encouragement for us. He does not want us to view a confession of faith as the end. He wants us to view it as the beginning of a lifelong journey of learning how to walk, and to submit, and to serve God the way he's called us to. And so, James, Paul, in theological disagreement? I don't see it at all. Okay, I see they are in harmony with one another. And again, here, James is just being very, very direct, very, very blunt, and says, "Once you're saved, I'm going to need," as a leader of the church, or as an apostle who is able to give instructions to the body of Christ, "I'm gonna need to see some works, because if I don't see works, I don't see fruit. And if I don't see fruit, I have no idea if you are truly making a confession of faith, or if you're just a hypocrite, or a play actor, or somebody who's pretending to do church, but you're not really, you don't, in your heart, you've not made a confession of faith." Now, that's maybe different than what we've been going through on Sundays in Hebrews, which is different of somebody who actually has a confession of faith, and the encouragement there is, "Make sure you keep that faith. Make sure that that faith is always that, no less than a baseline affirmation in your life, that yes, I'm a believer, and then let it grow, let it continue, let it become works." But, and as I mentioned last week again, this is just all set up. When James uses the term "works," he doesn't say it in terms of "works of the law of Moses" that puts us in somehow a better standing with God, because he owes us for all of those sins of adultery I didn't commit, and all those sins of murder that I didn't commit, and all those sins of lying or bearing false witness that I didn't commit. He, you know, somehow God is now owes me something, and I've earned something with him. And Paul, of course, in Romans 3 and other places, says, "No, no, there's not one righteous, no, there's not one. There's not one person other than Christ who could ever make a claim before the throne of God that his works allowed for him to be saved in heaven." Yeah?
What works exactly? Do me an example of what works you're talking about, because everybody does different.
Sure.
How should we be aspiring to it?
Well, I think it's a great question. So for those online, or anyplace else in the room, didn't hear it, you know, what are the examples of works that he's gonna talk about? Well, I think the very next chapter is gonna talk about the works of controlling our tongue. Ooh, and this is a big one. And James says, "It's the most challenging of all, is to control the works of our tongue." Now, one of the things I would have you hear in chapter two to notice is he doesn't give quantity, he doesn't even give quality per se of what works he's talking about. He's saying that a stagnant, dead faith, one that says, "Yeah, I made a profession of faith when I was 22 years old, and I'll see church and God again when I die." You know, he said, "That's dead, and that's not acceptable to God." But he does not say, "Well, here's what works is. You've gotta go to church every Sunday, and you've gotta tie 10%, 20%, 30%, you gotta do this, do this, do this, do this." He's not putting that burden on us. He's saying, "In your relationship, faith in Christ is a relationship. In your relationship with Christ, and your submission to the Holy Spirit, hear from Him about what personally God wants you to do in service to the kingdom." I think that's helpful for us in the sense of, he didn't give us a checklist. He didn't give us a list and say, "Well, if you're doing these things, boy, you're doing just fine. And if you're failing to do these things, you're in deep, deep, deep trouble." He says, "Faith without works is dead. Now, take that in prayer to the Holy Spirit, and see what the Holy Spirit would have us to know, and to say, and to do." Now, again, I think in that next step, this whole section is to be swift to hear. And swift to hear means hear that faith without works is dead. And then he's gonna say, "Be slow to speak." That's a work. Being slow to speak, and slow to anger, and slow to wrath. Those are works that James has given us, that little extra, little piece of encouragement, and say, "If I can ask you to do nothing else, please, please, be slow to speak, especially when it comes to your uncontrollable tongue that gets you and everyone else in the kingdom of God in trouble, because they think before they, or they speak before they think. And then they get angry, and they are not, that anger is never producing the righteousness of God, and therefore, be slow to anger, because you really wanna let the Lord have vengeance, and rather than you." And so he's giving us these, at least in a big, broad category, practical senses of, "Think about what you say, and think about what you do, because you're a believer, and you do not want to take the grace that has been extended to you as a believer, and treat it as if it's expendable, or that it means nothing to your relationship with Him." So, he's not saying, I mean, there is plenty of Scriptures we could go to and say, you know, "Take care of the orphans and the widows." He already told us, you know, earlier on, "Make sure, if somebody comes to you naked and hungry and destitute, you take care of their basic needs. That's a work, take care of it." But he's not giving us a laundry list of works. He's telling us, "Consider that works must be a component of our confession of faith." It drives us from the cross where we made our confession to eternity, where we meet the throne of God and see Him face-to-face when we die. Tim?
Can you expand on the definition of dead? Or is dead dead, or is faith dead forever?
No, so, good, great, another great question. So, dead means it's inactive, it's dormant, it is ineffective, it is not producing the potential that God has when He saved you.
Isn't it kind of the idea that if you have a relationship with Jesus, the works will naturally follow?
Yes.
They'll come with that?
Yes, that's right. If, and again, for those who are watching online, I will say that it's a natural outflowing extension. Those who come to faith in Christ will receive the Holy Spirit, and the Holy Spirit will not let them have this dead faith, and be comfortable with that dead faith. Right? "Oh, I don't have to do anything. It is, I, God has saved me, what can I do for God?" Not in, not to pay back God for my salvation, but to say, "Lord, what else can I do? But say, 'Thank you, and let me be used by you in your service.'" Okay? And I'll say this as well. So, I'm always so impressed by what we saw from James at the opening verse, and virtually all of Paul's letters, they refer to themselves as a bond servant of Christ. I want you to make sure, I wanna make sure that you understand, this is not a term that's reserved exclusively for apostles, and apostles get that extra special opportunity to say, "I'm a bond servant of Christ." I think every single person who comes to faith is supposed to recognize, "God has called me to be a bond servant, one who's totally submitted under your authority. I call you Lord, that means you choose what I do. I don't choose what I do." And so, we are under His service, and I believe as long as He's not judging the earth, He has something for every believer to do in service of that kingdom. Now, you can say, "Wait a minute, I have physical limitations. I'm, you know, of this age, or of this, this, and that set." Well, praying, interceding, you know, anything, there's, that's maybe what God calls you to. I mean, so, if we can go again to extremes, like the thief on the cross, we didn't see the whole conversation. There's no guarantee that Christ and that thief who made a confession of faith on the cross didn't have anything else to say. It just wasn't recorded, and that's okay. There's a lot of things. And John tells us specifically in his Gospel, if we wrote every single thing that happened in Jesus's lifetime, it would fill every volume of book that's possible. And so, it may be that that thief on the cross, Jesus told him, you know, "On your confession of faith, today you will be with me in paradise." Maybe he said, "Why don't you pray for your buddy on the other side?" You know, I mean, I don't know, I'm just, you know, kind of speculating. But maybe he said, "Why don't you start praying for the skeptic over here who is gonna die without salvation if he doesn't hear or receive me? Pray for him. I'll keep talking to him, while I'm talking to him, you pray for him." You know, or pray that the Lord will forgive you of your sins. And, you know, it could have been all kinds of things he could have done. We can go, you know, minister to people on their deathbed. Not many, for me, but a couple. And, you know, they don't have to get up out of bed and start serving, and making tea. They just have to receive. And if there's any amount of life left in them that God wants to use for His service, it may be that He just receives from them. And they're, you know, what we do know about the thief on the cross is that 2,000 years later, and we're still talking about him. Right? His work was that we're still talking about his faith, and his faith was amazing for us, because Jesus said, "Upon a simple profession of faith, today you will be with me in paradise." So he's still working. I mean, that's what Hebrew, later in Hebrews 11, talks about how Abel's blood is still speaking to us. Cain murdered his brother Abel, but Abel's sacrifice was righteous, and his righteous sacrifice, and his shed blood, his innocent shed blood, is still speaking to us today. And so that's works, in my mind. That's, he's done the works, because he's had a life of testimony that someone else can then learn from, and have their life transformed by him through that. So, we see that. And so, James, and this is where we left off with, I believe, last week, and that's to talk about Abraham. And that is, Abraham demonstrated to himself and to all of the world as an example that faith and works are coupled. He believed God, but what if Abraham's belief didn't translate to the action that God called him to? And Abraham said, "Wait a minute, God, you're wrong. I can't sacrifice my son. You promised me, you promised me that through Isaac, your seed would flow through him to salvation, the Messiah, and all of that, and that all the nations of the earth would be blessed through my seed, and all the things that you've been promising to me all along. If I take him up there and I kill him, then I don't see how you're gonna solve that problem, so I'm not gonna do it." That's not faith? Because he's then determining for himself what God, you know, needs to do, or must do, or can't do. But, you know, he said, "I believe," and that belief transitioned to action in Abraham, actually going up the mountain with his son, actually binding him to the altar, actually raising the knife and being ready to slay him, when God then said, "Oh, Abraham, don't do that. I see, or I'm helping you see," really, is how I would interpret it. "I'm helping you see that your faith produces action, that your faith is real and genuine, and I will call you a friend, and I will call you the father of faith, because you are willing to accept that even though the promise was through Isaac, even if you killed him, I would resurrect him, or in some way, bring about my promises through him." And then so, Hebrews 11 talks about you. That was his very, very understanding, that he believed that God was able to raise him even from the dead. And it even says, "From which he also received him," at least in a figurative sense. In Abraham's mind, when he went that journey, and went up the mountain, and bound his son Isaac on the altar, his son was dead. He considered him dead, because he was going to do it. He knew what God had called him to, and he was going to do it. Abraham's faith produced works. And James and Paul both use that example of saying, "This is how we can look to Abraham's faith, and how it transforms our understanding of relationship with God, because he actually did. And it was because of that action that Abraham's faith was counted to him as righteous." And so, both James and Paul take Abraham's sacrifice of Isaac as a principal, key understanding of what faith is. Faith and works are joined on the post-confession side, not on the pre-confession side. We can work and try to, "I'll come to God when I get my life all cleaned up. When I stop robbing banks, and sleeping around, and when I stop using all these, you know, profane words out of my mouth. I'll, when I fix all those problems, I'll come to God, and He'll be really happy, and then He'll accept me." That's not what God's looking for. God's looking for, "Come to me, and I will give you my spirit, and with my spirit, I will transform you, so that you will make your life a living sacrifice to me." He does not ask us to be clean before we come. He asks us to come and let Him do the transforming work in us. Okay, so that's James helping us see through what's going on there. And I don't wanna go backwards so far. But if you wanna turn to James, we'll look at this last section here in chapter two before we move on. All right, so... Just a couple of verses here. So, in verse 25 of chapter two, James writes, "Likewise, was not Rahab the harlot also justified by works when she received the messengers and sent them out another way? For as the body without the spirit is dead, so faith without works is dead also." So those are the last two verses we didn't catch last week. And so he talks about Rahab the harlot. I find it so interesting, a couple of things I find interesting, is that Rahab, as a Gentile, is often used as a primary example by New Testament writers as someone who had a high and impressive faith. She's a Gentile, she's always referred to as a harlot. That's the other thing I always find interesting, that just because she came to God by faith, God didn't change her well-known kind of history. Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that she, maybe she didn't, maybe she changed her profession after this statement of faith. We know that she was actually, you know, she was married to someone in the lineage of Jesus Christ. Right? Leading to David, all of that, she was in that. So she may have had a complete change of mind, heart, and profession after the walls of Jericho fell down. But she's always referred to, I don't think, I can think of a single time she's referred to as just Rahab. She's always referred to as Rahab the harlot. Okay? But she's always referred to in the positive light of, "This is a woman who expressed or demonstrated an incredible and commendable amount of faith that brought her salvation, even though God had never said, 'I'm gonna save a single Gentile, I'm gonna save a single Canaanite,' but she came in faith, and she was saved." And not because she had faith alone, according to James, but because she actually did something to show that her faith was genuine. Okay? So let's walk into all of this. And again, since James is writing to, obviously, the 12 tribes of Israel, he's writing to Jewish people, and now he's gonna start commending a Gentile. And if, again, if you know the history of Jews and Gentiles in Jesus's day, or in the first century, there was, except with the conversion experience in Christ, there was no love whatsoever. In fact, there was extreme hatred between the Jews and the Gentiles. They couldn't eat together, they weren't supposed to walk on the same side of the street, they weren't supposed to have any conversations. There was supposed to be no overlapping, at least in the tradition, not by God's rule, but by man's rule. There's supposed to be no interaction with either a Gentile and a Jew, and certainly not a Gentile woman. You know, and so, you've got this Gentile woman harlot that James is using as a model for faith. That ought to just shock the daylights out of his Jewish readers, unless they've already wrestled with the grace of God that brought them to salvation, not by their works, and not by their merit, but by faith and grace in Christ alone. This ought to have shocked them. But it's good, because we all need to be shocked back into the reality of what God teaches us. So, point number A, or letter A. Rahab knew of God's powerful working through Israel by the reports of others. And I don't have, won't have the opportunity to really go back and read this. But this is, so, under Moses and Joshua, while Moses was still alive, they were making their way 40 years in the wilderness from Egypt, because they had sinned, and the corpses fell in the wilderness. But they were making their way from Egypt towards Canaan once the last of that first generation had died off. And they were having these battles. And of course, when they were submitting themselves to God, they won those battles. And Rahab, and the rest of those who were living on the other side of the Jordan River, they know, they hear from reports that they're next. They're, the Israelites are gonna cross over the Jordan, they are going to start conquering the nations and the cities, and they're next. And she knows, because of these reports, there's, we have no chance. We may have more people, or we may have a better trained army, or we have better weapons, whatever it is. She knows in her heart and by faith that her nation, her city and her nation have no chance of victory over the Israelites, as long as God is with them. And so, she understood that her own nation had this, you know, no chance against God. Letter C, Rahab perceived that she would perish unless she appealed to God's mercy by faith. Look, she was gonna perish. Everybody else in her city, everybody else in that region, perished. I mean, it seems that her and her household, by her own faith, were spared this, you know, falling down to the walls and the complete destruction, and utter killing of every living thing in the city. She was spared, her household was spared. And she appealed to God's grace, even though it was never offered to her. She felt, well, I can't get into her mind, but I can tell you that she is commended for her faith, and probably felt like, "Well, if God is this powerful, maybe He also has grace." And so she comes to Him by faith and finds His grace and His mercy. And so, it's, again, this is why James is commending her. So, letter D, however, all this knowledge, knowledge of how powerful God is, and that He is the actual God of gods, would not have saved her life. She needed to receive those two spies with peace, meaning peaceably, not, you know, saying, "Oh, you guys are gonna get yours." She needed to not rat them out to those in the city who wanted to find them and kill them. She needed to actually put her own life at risk in putting their lives in safety in order for her faith to take action. And that's what James is commending her for. That's what the Book of Hebrews commends her for, is her faith in action. So, E, rather, Rahab had, had to send out these two spies from Israel as a demonstration that she actually has faith. It was this faith and her work in action that saved her life and placed her into that coveted position in the Hebrews Hall of Faith in chapter 11, verse 31. She had to. Okay? So, it was, so, James's point, and I think Hebrews's point about faith, and my point, therefore, and by extension, is that faith alone did not rescue and deliver Rahab. Now, I mean, maybe, 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 and this is an extreme maybe, maybe she would have found herself saved in heaven in eternal life because she knew in her heart that God was God, and she trusted in Him, and all of that. But really, the story of, the reason why Rahab is known, and has been known for the last 3,500 years in the nation of Israel and in all of Christianity, is because she, her faith translated to action. And that's why we know her, and that, and her life would have not been, would have not been spared had she not put her faith into action. She would not be in the genealogy of Jesus Christ, or the genealogy that leads to David and then leads to Christ. She would not be in that genealogy if she had just, in her mind, in her heart, had said, "Well, I believe God's the greater than our gods, and He's all-powerful, and whatever she believed." No, her faith was put into action. And, look, that's a great story, and I'm not saying it's not true. It is an absolutely true account. It's a great thing for us to think about in remembrance. But James is using it as an example of faith and works is necessary. We must put our faith into action the same way Abraham put his faith into action for the, as a Jewish example, and, even though he's not Jewish, right? He precedes the nation of Israel. But, and as a Gentile example, Rahab the harlot. So you've got a Jewish example, or a champion of the nation of Israel's faith, and a Gentile example, both of which, God demonstrates as being fully confirmed and demonstrated to us as being done faith plus works. So the answer for you and I is, "Wait a minute, I think I need to have faith plus works." In fact, no, I know I need to have faith plus works, because that's what Scripture calls us to. So, the conclusion here, and I'm gonna run down some things here, because I know we all have some questions probably still lingering around. Faith without works is dead, and dead faith offers no hope or profit of salvation, according to James. Which is, therefore, I'm gonna agree with James and say, "I agree." So, dead faith offers no hope or profit for salvation. It doesn't, it certainly doesn't build the kingdom of God. And it is not something that a person who says, "I just, look, my whole objective and goal in life is to slide in under the wire by the skin of my teeth, and I'll just barely make it. Tell me how I can do that." I, I got nothing. I cannot tell somebody how to just barely slide in under the wire and, and kinda sorta make it and just hope that God's grace is more than enough to cover over my hardness of my heart, that doesn't really wanna do any more than the bare minimum to, to receive eternal life. I, I don't have any answers. If, if there's some cutoff, if there's a huge amount of grace that God's willing to offer, I don't know how you roll the dice and figure out where, where that line is. I can tell you that where you want to be is you wanna be not just barely sliding in under the wire, you wanna be constantly drawing yourself closer and closer and closer into the throne of God by faithful, obedient, humble service to him, whatever he calls. And I trust that he's not gonna call any one of us the same way he calls the person sitting next to us. We all have a different duty, we all have a different role, we all have a different responsibility. Our, our duty though is exactly the same in the sense that whatever he says, we do. And that, that, to me, that is absolute assurance that I'm where God wants me to be, and I will never have to doubt whether or not I'm in the faith. I just keep doing, I just keep believing, I just keep serving, not out of fear, but out of, he has placed in me an enormous responsibility to express my love to him through my actions, once he demonstrated who he is and I could be saved in him. Again, people theologically just keep putting the cart before the horse and keep saying, "Well, you're teaching us that, that you can work for salvation." No, you work from salvation, always from, not for. We work from salvation. Anybody who tries to preach, teach, or demonstrate that you work for salvation is going against every single message of the New Testament. You receive faith, you receive his grace, you have eternal life granted to you, and then you work for God because of a love and for a honor of the one who saved you. He saved you with a purpose. In fact, that's exactly what Ephesians ten, Ephesians two, ten says, that we, he created us for good works. He created us, he saved us and created us for good works, that we would do them. And so, we're called to do them. All right. So, just as the human body without the spirit is dead, that, this is referred to as basically as the second death. Okay, and, um, in Revelation nineteen, I believe, or nineteen or twenty, I think, but, uh, he talks about this is the second death, and, and this is, to me, this is, um, we, we are presented in Scripture as a three-component human being. We have body, soul, and spirit. And like when Rachel, Jacob's wife, dies in Genesis, it says that her spirit departed her, or her soul departed her. So, the separate, I really should say soul, her soul departed her. And so, when, when our human tent, our flesh that we live in today dies, our soul and our flesh separate. But we're referred to as a, as a three-part being, body, soul, and spirit. You shall love the Lord God with body, soul, and spirit. And so, once, once this tent is done, we have this other two-part kind of intangible, invisible component that none of us can see on an X-ray, that's soul and spirit, joined together. But the soul without the spirit is dead, and that's the second death. For those who are unbelievers, God takes back the spirit and sends the soul off into eternal damnation. Some call it hell, or lake of fire, or whatever you wanna call it. Um, and so, that's where the two are separated from there. So, the, and, and we're, we're understanding this, the soul and the spirit, when one separates from the other, we're dead. Our spirit is dead. It's no longer active. It's no longer communicating with God. And so, James tells us that so faith without works is dead. Just like it, same example. He could've said, "Just like Rachel in Genesis, without the soul, the body is dead," but he said, "Without the spirit, the body is dead, or the life is dead." And so, faith without works is dead. I don't know how, how else he could, throughout this teaching, make sure that we understand, if I'm a, if I'm a confessing believer in Christ, I have things to do in the kingdom, in the service of God. And I, and I can't necessarily look over my shoulder at what somebody else is doing and say, "Well, that's what I'm supposed to do." You know, I, I, if somebody else teaches in Sunday School, I'm supposed to teach in Sunday School. No, maybe, maybe not. It's, it's up to what the Holy Spirit calls you to do, but again, it, it could be, it could be prayer, it could be, you know, generosity, it could be hospitality, it could be teaching, preaching, acts of service, it could be missionary work, it could be a multitude of things. But for each person, it's different, because we're all different. We talked about that in First Corinthians study. You know, the eye and the hand and the foot and the mouth and all that, can't have an argument with each other because we're all needed, and God has intentionally purposed every one of us to serve collectively and uniquely in the body of Christ. So, we don't know, I, I can't tell you what it is for you. You can take a spiritual gifts test, you can, you know, volunteer for every position in the church and figure out which one you like to do, and the people who, who work with you or you work for in the church like you doing it, but, you know, every one of us has something to do, and, and I believe, wholeheartedly, that the Lord will reveal that to us as we show that we're willing to do whatever he calls us to. Through prayer and through acts of service, we'll figure that out. Okay, so here's some observations, um, including concluding this, again, most, probably most challenging chapter in the book of James, although maybe not the most convicting, but certainly most challenging. Uh, so here's some observations on this passage, this challenging passage. James's message never offers a call to salvation. Tried to clarify that all the way through. He's not calling unbelievers to faith, he's calling faithful believers to service, to not let their faith be dead. James is commanding believers to understand and accept that works will always, key word, of course, always, always flow from a true salvation in faith. A, you know, there are, we, sometimes we use these terms like true and false salvation. Uh, true salvation really isn't in Scripture, but I'm trying to use that in terms of someone who says, "Oh, sure, I believe in Christ," but doesn't do anything with it, they're really a false believer. They're really, they're not, not, they're not a convert at all. Um, they're just, for whatever narcissistic reasons they're doing it, whether they are looking for dates in the church, or whether they're looking to steal things from people in the church, whether they just feel happy and, you know, need a social club. But if they're, if they're not making a actual bona fide confession of faith, then, uh, then we, we don't know what's gonna happen to them, but we do know that a bona fide, actual, genuine confession of faith will always result in having works flow out of us, through us, by the Spirit. Letter C, a believer's works based on a profession of faith are not the same as the works of the law. I've been, trying to make that point is all the way through. The works of the law, six hundred and thirteen Old Testament commandments offered to God, or from God to Moses, um, those are works that will, will always demonstrate we need a Savior. Always demonstrate we can't make it on our own. We can always demonstrate that we will never please God by doing works that he commanded Moses and Israel to do. He commands us to receive grace by faith and then let those works flow from us. So, the message of Romans and Galatians, just a couple of examples from Paul, is not to be at all confused with the message from James. So, I'm gonna continue to proclaim, there is no contradiction between our two apostles, Paul and James, and their writings. So, here's, here's how we can kind of just, you know, in a short summary, piece all that together. Galatians explains why the law of Moses has no power to, at all, to save anyone. The law has no power to save anyone. Can't save. That's, that's, if you, the six chapters of Galatians is pretty much, "Don't let people talk you into going back in serving and doing the works of the law because they can't save you. It's grace, it's faith that saves you, so walk in the spirit, not in the flesh. Walk in the law of Christ, the law of liberty, not in the law of Moses." That's the book of Galatians. Uh, also, Romans explains that the law was given to reveal our sin. That's the main, well, why did God give six hundred and thirteen commandments to Israel? To reveal that we are sinners, and to prove that sinners need a solution for their sins apart from any attempt at being obedient to the law. That's the purpose of the law. God gave it not because he expected any individual in any part of human history to perfectly accomplish on it. I mean, he did for Christ, he, Christ perfectly fulfilled the law. But for the rest of us, it was not there as a, "Well, just keep trying, keep trying to climb that ladder, and you know, you climb up three rungs and you fall down, you get back up, and you try climbing three more rungs." No, he says, in fact, it says over and over again, Old and New Testament, "He who fails on one single point of the law has permanently failed forever." So, you'll never make it. The moment you fall off that rung of trying to climb up to heaven by your own efforts and your own merit, the moment you fall, you're done. You haven't, if you're guilty of one point, you're guilty of all points, forevermore. Um, and so, Romans explains that the law has, is there only for one real purpose, and that is to reveal that God is not going to count your works as righteous. He's going to count his works as righteous, and he will give us his works of righteousness by faith. So then, James does not mention the law of Moses in this passage. We see that. He does mention the law multiple times in the book, but in this passage about faith and works, he is not mentioning the law of Moses. In fact, um, he clearly is not associating the law of, uh, this is with Moses. He says it's the work of faith, um, and, and as Paul does in his letters when he talks about the works of the law. So, Paul is, when Paul is refuting for Judaism or for Judaizers trying to bring Gentile Christians under the law, he's always saying, "The law, the works of Moses, or the law of Moses can't save you." And James is saying, "Works of righteousness, works of faith are necessary." Not works of the law, but works of faith are necessary. So, confusion about faith and works really comes from, in my view, a misunderstanding of interpretation, that the Holy Spirit and the writers of the New Testament are not confused about these distinctions. So, I tried to, in, in summary, give you some components where people say, "Wait a minute, what about Galatians? What about Romans?" Okay, the Holy Spirit, I guarantee, is not confused. And I guarantee that when he told James, "Write down, faith without works is dead," he did not say, "Uh..." But somebody's gonna get confused by that. You know, he said, "Of course, people are gonna get confused by it. People get confused by everything in Scripture." But the diligent who study the words of Scripture will see, "Wait a minute, wait a minute." Any supposed claimed, uh, contradiction between Paul's writings and James's writing is not really there. Because it's, it's faith from works, or works from faith, not works for salvation. That Paul is talking about works for salvation, James is talking about works from salvation. So, we fully confirm that faith alone opens the door for our salvation. It is critical, it is essential. Faith opens the door to salvation. There's no hope for salvation without faith. But works done by faith actually serve a purpose of confirming to ourselves first and to others that we are on the correct path that leads to eternal life through faith in Jesus Christ. With no works, how, how is, how are you gonna evaluate yourself? Let me, just look in the mirror and say, "Well, I refuse to go to church, I refuse to read my Bible, I refuse to pray, I refuse to take communion, I refuse to change my thought life, my vocabulary, my actions that I know are sinful against the Word of God. I refuse everything, but, you know, I think I'm still okay with God." Because, you know, I, I, I've heard this at least several times, you know, "God and I have this understanding. I can do whatever I want, and God knows that my heart is really kinda, you know, more for Him than not for Him, so that's okay." No, it's to confirm first for me and for you, "How am I doing?" And we have this mirror that James referred to earlier, we have this mirror of Scripture that says, "How you doing? Well, go read James. How's your tongue doing? How's your wrath against other people doing?" Right? He's giving us this, this statement. Paul gives us Romans chapter twelve, and a multitude of other places, Ephesians, uh, four, five, and six, he gives us instructions about how to live our life, and that, that's that mirror. "How am I doing? Well, check the words of Scripture. Husbands love your wives. How you doing, husbands? Are you loving your wives?" As, as Christ loved the church and gave himself for her. Women, love your husbands. How you doing? Right? I mean, there's so many of these checkpoints that we can do and say, "How you doing? Well, I, I'm struggling here." Okay, well, keep working, keep going, keep submitting, keep praying. Right? And then, that's for all of us personally, individually, looking in the mirror, or, or at least looking in the words of Scripture to reveal our true nature to us. But then, in the others, you know, I mean, if the church is gonna be healthy and successful, we've got to be able to evaluate those who we put in positions of leadership or in, in areas of service, we have got to be able to evaluate them on objective measures. We can't just have somebody come in and say, "Well, of course I love God." And, and, "Oh, okay, well then go start preaching. We gotta have works" that, that demonstrate you know the Word, you're studying the Word, you've shown yourself approved, you're rightly dividing the Word of truth, you're doing the things that Scripture calls a leader, an elder, or a servant of any kind in the church. We have to be able to evaluate on something. God didn't say, "Well, just guess. Use your, your best gut instinct to determine who's, who's a, who's a true, solid Christian or not." He says, "Look at their works." If they're producing works, if they're producing fruit, it's a pretty darn good sign that the, what's going on inside is good, because what's coming out is good. If what's coming out is ugly, nasty, sinful, then there's probably a whole lot of unchanged attitudes of the heart that are still coming out and needs to be addressed. So, he gives us this faith produces works formula, first for our own understanding of how we're doing. And I can also refer you back to First John, as we kinda went through some of that. First John gives us at least twelve tests of how's your faith going. Make sure you're confident in your faith. James and others give us more tests that revealed us how we're doing. And then, also, for the rest of us, you know, can we trust that person with that area of leadership and responsibility in the kingdom of God? Or are they, have they demonstrated themselves to be untrustworthy at this time, and they need to mature more before we can give them more? Faith works provides a great benefit for both us and for, uh, us individually, to look in the mirror and for the church as a whole. So, to me, that's the, the covering of the faith and works components of James. It's, it's not contradictory in my mind, it is entirely consistent with what Scripture throughout the New Testament has to say. Um, and the Holy Spirit knows what he's doing, so let's follow him in that. All right, so let's move on then into chapter three. There's not really any big chapter breaks here. He's moving right on. He says, you know, "Faith without works is dead," um, just as the, as the spirit without the body is dead, so, you know, he's then again, then move on. And so, we have transitioned here, at least if you're looking, if you were to look in the first week's notes, we're gonna transition in an outline form from being, uh, you know, first off, for that slow to speak, now he's gonna talk about a specific category of those who are slow to speak, and that is teachers and believers submitting, um, the tongue to God's authority. Okay, um, and so, well, I'll talk about this. I, I don't believe this is only for teachers, but this, they are the main focus group, but let's run through James chapter three, fairly short chapter, um, and to see what he has to say. This one is probably more painful in application than chapter two. Chapter two is just more, uh, more, brings up more ire from people who don't understand faith and works, how they go together. All right, so James, chapter three, verse one. He says, "My brethren, let not many of you become teachers, knowing that we shall receive a stricter judgment, for we all stumble in many things. If anyone does not stumble in word, he is a perfect man, able to bridle the whole body. Indeed, we put bits in horses' mouths that they may obey us, and we turn their whole body. Look also at ships. Oh, they are, although they are so large and driven by fierce winds, they are turned by a very small rudder wherever the pilot desires. Even so, the tongue is a little member and boasts great things. See how great a forest, uh, how great a forest a little fire kindles. And the tongue is a fire, a world of iniquity. The tongue is so set among our members that it defiles the whole body and sets the fire, sets on fire the course of nature, and is set on fire by hell. For every kind of beast and bird, of reptile, of creature of the sea, is tamed and has been tamed by mankind. But no man can tame the tongue. It is an unruly evil, full of deadly poison. With it we bless our God and Father, and with it we curse men who have been made in the similitude of God. Out of the same mouth proceed blessing and cursing. My brethren, these things ought not be so. Does a spring send forth fresh water and bitter water from the same opening? Can a fig tree, my brethren, bear olives or grapevine bear figs? Grapevine bear figs. Thus, no spring yields both saltwater and fresh. Who is wise and understanding among you? Let him show by good conduct that his works are done in the meekness of wisdom. But if you have bitter envy and self-seeking in your hearts, do not boast and lie against the truth. The wisdom, this wisdom does not descend from above, but is earthly, sensual, demonic. From where envy and self-seeking exist, confusion and every evil thing are there. But the wisdom that is from above is first pure, then peaceable, gentle, willing to yield, full of mercy and good fruits, without partiality and without hypocrisy. Now, the fruit of righteousness is sown in peace by those who make peace." So, I really consider that just all one big section, and it's kinda hard to, to break it up very, very much there. Um, and so, he's, first off, he's, he addresses teachers, so he has teachers, um, is in direct word, this, this section is really his direct view, is his direct focus, okay? But really, all believers are commanded to consider how they use their tongues, and if they are properly sub- Okay, but really, all believers are commanded to consider how they use their tongues and if they are properly submitted to God. So hopefully you can see that, that he is saying, now, I think we see this, we saw it in Corinthians, we see it here in James, other places. A lot of people in this early church were kind of aspiring, oh, let me be the preacher, oh, let me do the teaching. You know, get out of my way, like in 1 Corinthians, you know, kind of move aside, you know, I'm going to start speaking. I'm going to scream louder than you, and the people will hear me more than they hear you. And we see all those people, you know, kind of vying for popularity and for opinions and all of that, and trying to be teachers. And Paul clearly in there says, not all are called to be teachers, not all have that spiritual gift. And here James is saying, look, you know, being called to be a teacher has an incredible responsibility that is not suitable for everybody. And so we need to look at it in both the positive and the negative light of what the responsibility of a teacher is. But it does require, and I think it does command and instruct every believer to hear about what the tongue does and how damaging and destructive the tongue can be in our relationships and the things that we do. And so teachers certainly can influence and corrupt people's minds and hearts by misspeaking, mis-teaching, misapplying God's truth. And so there's a huge responsibility, and therefore we get a greater condemnation if we do it incorrectly, which most people, I think, probably don't want. Most people don't want that higher level of, hey, every word that you speak is being judged at an extremely high level, whether or not it conforms to God's Word or doesn't, and how many people are led astray by the things that you're teaching. But all of us are called to very carefully consider how our tongues are affecting our entire body and all of our relationships that we are engaged in. So number two here is point, my point here is that the tongue, when he says tongue, I believe he's really, it's kind of a generic term. I mean, I think he's specifically talking about that organ, and we get it. But I believe that he's more generic about what comes out of our heart. And we see that in a couple of places, we'll look at it. But it's really our heart is directing our tongues. What comes out of our heart is, or what comes out of our mouth is originating from our hearts, the core of who we are. And so we are called, because that's a condition. If I start using foul language, if I start berating people, or tearing them down, or speaking ill about people in some way that is not beneficial to them, not helpful, not, you know, speaking the truth in love as God commands us to do, then I've clearly got heart issues. And I probably don't belong in a leadership position, I don't belong in a teaching position. If I'm constantly, you know, just tearing down for just, just for my own giggles, or for my own edification, I'm trying to build myself up by tearing other people down. That's different than correcting, say, false doctrine or something that must be dealt with. When we as leaders, certainly, and elders and teachers come across false doctrine, we have to deal with it. Because it is so corrosive and corrupting that it destructs everything that it touches. And so we have to deal with those. But just generally walking around and saying, you know, hey, you don't look like you have enough money to sit in our church. Why don't you, you know, hang out in the back, like James talks about in the first chapter? Right, you know, you're just tearing people down, watch the tongue, because it's an indication of what's coming out of the heart. But I'm going to say, however, all language-based communication, I think, is easily in scope here, not just actual spoken words. It's any kind of words that are spoken. So I would say verbally, or any denotative use of the term tongue, we'll get back to that in a minute. I did want to give you a couple of these verses from Matthew in Proverbs and Psalms. So here's the proof that what comes out of our mouth is actually coming out of our heart first. So Matthew, Jesus says, "Brood of vipers, how can you, being evil, speak good things? For out of the abundance of the heart the mouth speaks." Right, so the mouth is only speaking in response to what it's actually being seated by within our hearts. Proverbs, Solomon, in chapter 18, verse 21, says, "Death and life are in the power of the tongue, and those who love it will eat its fruits." Meaning those who use that tongue and wield its power for either death or life will eat the fruits, either good or bad, that the tongue is using to corrupt. Then Psalm 141, verses three and four. Psalmist says, "Set a guard, O Lord, over my mouth; keep watch over the door of my lips. Do not incline my heart to any evil thing, to practice wicked works with men who work iniquity, and do not let me eat of their delicacies." So you'd see, he's talking about, you know, my lips and my tongue, my mouth, these are important, but do not incline my heart to evil, because it's from the heart that these words of, you know, evil are being spoken. And so I've got to watch my, the words that come out of my mouth. So again, going back to your notes there, I'll just pop back here for a second. So words spoken verbally, in that denotative sense, right? The actually spoken words are destructive and can do damage in the relationships that we have. And then point B, words communicated in written form for others, whether it's by pen, paper, computerized, emails, texts, these things can be just as powerful and just as damaging as words spoken in the tongue. In fact, I think, you know, most of us can probably attest that people who are very, very aggressive with written communication are oftentimes meek and mild when it comes to actually personal, because they kind of back down when they're actually having to look somebody in the eyeballs and say the same thing. But they can type that word out, you know, and really get after, get into somebody in computerized. So we have to watch that too, because you know what, that's coming out of our heart as well. Right, so it is the tongue, but I think it's broader than just the tongue. And words that come to mind even internally, but are never communicated directly to others. You know, somebody walks in the door, and I do my best, I put a smile on my face, how you doing? And in my heart, I'm going, I just like this person more than I dislike, you know, blah, blah, blah. And it's in my heart, it's still revealing in my heart. It's something that popped into my brain that is demonstrating my heart is not actually in full submission to the authority of God. And so personally, you know, I can't hear what goes on in your brain, you can't hear what goes on in my brain. But if you have thoughts that pop into your head at times, that you're like, yeah, God doesn't like that thought, I don't think it's all that different than actually speaking the Word in terms of revealing the true nature of what needs, God wants to repair and restore in our hearts. Okay, and, you know, I don't have any direct personal examples, but I can tell you that my life over the last, you know, 25, 30 years of being a Christian, I can tell you that my thought life and my word life has definitely been on a better trajectory than I ever really thought possible. That things I used to think about have been purged more and more and more. And words that I used to speak in a little more carelessly have started to come more and more under control. You know, and so I see that, it's taken a lot of time, but I've also seen an actual development of, I don't even have the thoughts as much as I used to. I mean, quite a bit of reduction in what I would call evil thoughts compared to that Scott that lived 25 years ago. Like every thought was like, stop, no, 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 don't say anything about that, oh, no, don't do that. You know, I mean, it's like constantly, you know, being battling in this old flesh nature. And now I would say, I'm not trying to pat my own back, what I'm trying to say is, over time, I have seen that even the thoughts that I think, that I know that come out of my heart have changed into a more God-honoring perspective than I ever would have been, you know, even in my first decade of being a Christian. So, it changes. So words in tongue, words in written form of any kind, or any other kind of communication that might be out there, and words even that flow in and out of our brain. Now, we can't really control that on a case-by-case basis, but we can learn how to get our hearts more submitted to God's authority so that the thoughts start changing towards him and less towards fleshly outcomes. Alright, with that, we'll take our five-minute break.